The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarolus Insurance Agency at www.decarolusinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidia.com.
Mr. Pishoni, if you would just come around the bar here. Good evening, everyone. My name is Pauline Cormier. I'm the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee. This is a matter on for interview this evening. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the appointment of the following individuals to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire April 15, 2026. We have with us this evening Mark Pishoni of Leominster. Mr. Pishoni, I'm going to tell you that the second member of my committee is the Counselor Ardinger, sitting to my left, and the third member is Sue Shalfo-Zephyr, who is not with us this evening. And just for those people at home, this is for the Zoning Board of Appeals. And just for information's sake, the Zoning Board of Appeals is responsible for hearing applications submitted for special permits and variances. These applications relate to the interpretation and administration of the City of Leominster zoning ordinance. The Board also hears appeals of the decision of the building inspector, and all decisions relating to the building inspector's interpretation of the zoning ordinance may be appealed. They also hear and decides upon comprehensive permit applications. And that is about the definition of what they do. Mr. Pishoni, and I think everyone on the council should have a copy of your resume. I want to welcome you.
Thank you.
And I want to give you the opportunity to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. My name is Mark Pishoni. I'm a relatively new resident of Leominster. I spent about 25 years or so in Sterling, Mass., and just recently moved to Leominster in July of last year. Married, four kids, four daughters, to be technical. I work at UMass Memorial Hospital. That's a recent job. I left Raytheon in February, where I was for three and a half years. Before that, I was at Seven Hills. You have my resume, but Seven Hills, and then Fidelity Investments for 20 years.
And, Mr. Pishoni, what do you believe that you bring with you? What skills do you bring with you to the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Well, one thing that's not on my resume is, aside from my career jobs that I had, I was a landlord for about 12 to 15 years. So I do have some building experience. I actually stood before the council or before the zoning board in Sterling to get a piece of my property rezoned to commercial from residential. So I have a little bit of experience. I'm familiar with keeping the neighborhoods intact and keeping the integrity of neighborhoods and the land development and things like that, so I think I could contribute in that way.
Excellent. Have you had any opportunity to sit in on any of the meetings?
Not in Leominster, no, but I did in Sterling.
Okay. Okay.
I still actually have stuff in boxes at home from the move, so.
Well, welcome to Leominster.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you here and willing to do some work for the city and contribute to your new city. I'm going to open this up to Counselor Ardinger for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Pishoni, I mess up Italian names.
That's okay. Pishoni.
Pishoni, okay. Your resume is certainly a well-rounded resume, a lot of IT and financial services areas and stuff like that. And I noticed the real estate, and that's probably the key to your experience, right? You would say that would be the real factor that's going to help you out over the ZBA?
I think so. Along with, it's not directly related, but there's a lot of problem-solving and clarity-finding and research that goes into the IT positions that I've held as well.
Okay.
So I think that some of that can transfer over to solving difficult situations or what have you.
Do you think, my favorite question is, what do you think is going to be your biggest challenge?
Probably just learning the ropes of the format and the meetings and things like that, because I haven't really served in any town capacity.
Okay.
But I think I'll be able to handle it.
Okay. Crisis management?
Yes.
That comes in good.
Yes. That was my favorite role.
Was it? Okay. I don't really have any other questions, and, you know, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other members of the council have any questions? Okay, seeing none, this was quick and simple.
Okay.
Mr. Pishoni, we are going to, we will get to this appointment later on the agenda, so you're welcome to stay.
Okay.
Or you're welcome to, we can contact you if you have somewhere else to be, but we'd love to have you stay.
I do, unfortunately, tonight. I apologize.
No, that's fine. We will have the clerk get in touch with you.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you very much. And it is now 6:45 PM, and Counselor Shalfo-Zephyr is not present, so Counselor Frieda, I'm going to ask you to handle the public hearing for the public service communication.
Good evening. This is a continued public hearing, 20-23 Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid, requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Litchfield Street, National Grid, to install one single own pole on Litchfield Street, beginning at a point approximately 630 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Elm Hill Avenue, and continuing approximately 20 feet in a western direction. Install one 45-foot class H1 pole to support a load brake switch to de-energize the primary conductor in the location of the upcoming culvert construction by the Leominster DPW. Location approximately as shown on plan attached. Wherefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it will be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may be necessary. Set poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Litchfield Street, Leominster, Massachusetts, number 30378259, February 9, 2023. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways with the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings, as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. The petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. I'm assuming there's someone here from National Grid?
Yep. Good evening. My name is Matt Vieira. I'm representing National Grid. This is not my project. I'm speaking in behalf of Mark Tapley. So as you read, it's a new pole, 9-50, and it's necessary for the de-energization of that portion of the line. This pole is going to be utilized. We're going to install a load brake, which is pretty much a device that is used to open a circuit and make it not live. So that's the purpose of this petition, and, yeah, that's pretty much about it, if you have any questions or concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I neglected to recognize, you know, my name is Claire Frieder. I'm the second member of the committee, and Counselor Brady is the third member. I don't, do we have any referrals from DPW? Did we send any out? I know I spoke to Counselor Shalfo-Zephyr late today, so.
Todd got it for you right there. It just came in for this meeting.
Ms. Caitlin Hoffman, this is March 16. Petition 2023. Dear Caitlin, the Leominster Department of Public Works has reviewed the petition to install a pole on Litchfield Street and offers the following comments. DPW approves the petition as submitted. Please let us know if you have any questions. Sincerely, Ray Racine, DPW Director. Was that the only one that we referred to? Okay. It seems pretty clear-cut. You know, the culvert's there, and I know they work on it quite often, and I know they're trying to do some upgrading there, so I understand. I've been by there, so I understand what the situation is there.
There isn't any.
And there's no direct neighbor involvement, I don't believe.
Well, I took a look before I came here via Google Earth. I saw no houses nearby, but I did not drive to the location. I'm assuming not. The images were pretty new, was from 2018 or something, so I'm assuming there's nothing around. Yeah, I don't see anything around, to be honest, so I'm pretty sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Brady, do you have any questions?
No, just procedurally, everyone's, all butters have been noticed, notified, correct?
Okay.
Yes, all the butters were notified. We got one back, and that was because it's vacant land and they don't have a receptacle.
And no other questions?
Are there any other councils that have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I will go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on 20-23 in support? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? For the final time, anyone who wishes to speak in support? If not, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Again, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? A certain final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? If not, I'll go to members of the council one more time, if there are any questions or comments. If not, I will declare the public hearing closed. Thank you.
Okay, and it is now time for the 6:50 PM public hearing for Legal Affairs. Mr. Chairman, if you're ready, 19-23.
Mr. President, I recuse myself from this matter, so I would ask the second member of Legal Affairs to.
Thank you.
Assume the chair.
Counselor Badanta, if you'd like to handle this.
Thank you, Mr. President. 19-23, William Brady, Wood One Consular, request to amend Chapter 13 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Section 13-34, no parking on certain streets by inserting the following: No parking on lock drive on both sides for the entirety of the street. We did get a favorable referral from the Police Department, and more recently, we got a favorable message from one of the landowners on that road, James Edmargoe Xarris, who indicated they were in favor of this particular ordinance, a suggested ordinance. The other, the third member of my committee is Counselor Pauline Cormier. Did you have any questions?
That's Counselor Deacon.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Deacon. Going back in time.
No, I don't. I'm in agreement with the petition.
And the author of the petition, did you want to offer anything, Counselor Brady?
No, I think with the referrals and whatnot, explain.
Okay. Does any member of the council have a question? Counselor Frieda?
Yeah, I'll just speak in support. This goes back a long way. We've had many, many suggestions for that area of lock drive from different owners in the past, and it's always been an issue with some of the neighboring businesses. So I think it's just that it's time, so I think it needs to be addressed.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselor? Seeing none, I'll go to members of the public. Does any member of the public wish to speak on 19-23, either in favor or against? You can come to the podium and be recognized.
Yes, I'm Tom Marks. I'm the General Manager of Rise and Iron Cable, and as you'd all said, it's been a problem for a long time. As of lately, it's actually been reasonably good, but we've had trucks parking overnight down there now and jamming up both sides of the street. So those of us that actually are, have businesses down there, have a lot of trouble getting in and out with our trucks, so I'm definitely in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Is there any other member of the public that either in favor or in opposition to the 19-23 want to be heard? In a third and final time, is there any other member of the public relative to 19-23 that wishes to be heard, either in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, I will go to the council one more time, and I will now close the public hearing.
Thank you very much. We are now going to hold the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding to or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. No one has formally officially signed up, but I will ask, would any member of the audience like to speak to the public forum? If so, please step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Once again, would anybody from the audience like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would any member of the audience like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I declare the public forum closed. We're running on time. Right on time tonight.
I know.
The meeting of the Lemonster City Council for March 27, 2023. Will you all please stand and join me for a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm now going to take a roll call of the honorable members of the Lemonster City Council, beginning with Councilor Bedanza.
Present.
Councilor Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Arndt.
Present.
Councilor Angelini.
Present.
Councilor Brady.
Present.
Councilor Deacon.
Present.
Councilor Frida.
Present.
And I am present. There are eight members present this evening. Madam Vice President, do you have any records to approve this evening?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, Councilor Frida, I believe the records of February 27, 2023, you had a question on it, or you had some changes. Has that been taken care of?
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that got taken care of. The, I was made aware of there was a need for, so, I'm sorry. So, the February 27, 2023 minutes, I find to be in good order, and I ask that they be placed on file. And then the March 13 minutes, I was made aware this morning that there was, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr still had some amendments she would like to make, and I have not had the opportunity to review any of those changes. So, I'm going to ask that we give the March 13, 2023, we'll put that on the next agenda as well.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, if I may, just as a suggestion, the Clerk's office does a really good job of getting us the minutes back right away. So, if we can make an effort, all of us, to review them, send over any changes, email those, so that the Clerk's office can get them done, and then I also have to review them before the next meeting. So, if we can turn those around a little bit quicker, I think it'll be better for all of us, and then we all have an extra chance to review the records. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. All right. So, if there's no objection, we will put the minutes of February 27, 2023 on file. And we still, one of the councils would like a review of the March 13, 2023, so we will wait on those. Madam Clerk, if you can reach out to her tomorrow to see if you can get from her what she's looking for, and so that we can get that taken care of, that'd be great. And so, if there's no objections, we will put February 27, 2023 on file. Okay. Moving on to communications from the mayor, beginning with money orders, C-58, Madam Clerk.
C-58, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $125,000 be made to the Fire Department capital account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
And C-58 will be referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
C-58 has been given regular course. C-59.
C-59, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $1,401,825 be made to the General Fund account, the same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. These funds are needed to fund the fiscal year 2023 capital request from various departments. Please list below in the atta, yeah, please list below in the attached accompanying documentation of the, if application. Please note, this was directly copied and pasted from the original letter. Number 154, institutional technology, $118,875. 192, building maintenance, $230,000. 210, Fire Department, $231,250. 220, Police Department, $60,000. Number 300, School Department, $25,000. Number 421, Highway, DPW, $257,200. Number 491, Cemetery, $9,000. Number 543, Veteran Center, $5,000. Number 610, Library, $3,031,331,000. And number 630, Recreation Department, $134,500, bringing it to the total request of the $1,401,825. And if anybody was wondering, those numbers are in direct correlation to the object code in Munis.
Okay. And C-59 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Okay. C-59 has been given regular course. C-60.
C-60, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an amendment to the non-union employee salary and wage scale for fiscal year 2024 with the attached scale. Also, please amend the ordinance to non-union positions and classifications based on the support attached.
And C-60 is also, is going to be, sorry, is going to be referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. C-60, first time on the calendar, regular course, please. And if I could ask for referrals from the HR Director and the Treasurer, please. And Madam Clerk, could you get us copies, or at least a couple of copies, that perhaps we can leave in your office that we could review? Copies of the report that generated this petition?
Yes, for the pay scales, the matrix that just came out?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Did you want to set a public hearing now, or did you want to wait till memos come in?
I'd like to schedule a public hearing at this time.
Okay. I'd recommend April 10, 2023. And do you think 10 minutes' time is enough, or do you think you need more, Councilor Angelini?
Let's go with 10. We can always, we can always go, go a little further.
6:45 PM.
Thank you.
Okay. So, C-60 will be given regular course with a referral to the HR Director as well as the Treasurer. And we will establish a public hearing of April 10, 2023 at 6:45 PM. All those in favor of establishing that public hearing signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-60 has been given regular course, and we have established a hearing for April 10, 2023 at 6:45 PM. Moving on to appointments, Madam Clerk.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of the following. Library Board of Trustees, terms to expire 4/15/2026. Susan Shelton, 4 Keys Lane, Princeton, Massachusetts.
Okay. And this appointment is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
And this appointment has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions, first time on the calendar, 29-23, Madam Clerk.
May I read these in block?
And if there's no objection, you can read 29, 23 through 32-23 in block.
29-23, upscale consignment, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 875 Maryam Ave, Lemonster, Mass. 30-23, GameStop Inc., request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 26 Orchard Hill Park Drive, Lemonster, Mass. 31-23, Best Buy Stores LP, number 1433, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 33 Orchard Hill Park Drive, Lemonster, Mass. 32-23, Fred's Auction, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 38 Spruce Street, Lemonster, Mass.
Okay. And these four petitions are referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
And these four petitions have been given regular course. Moving on to matters before the City Council. First, we will start with a financial report. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Thank you. We began the fiscal year on July 1, 2022, with a balance in the stabilization account of $20,675,366. We have transferred in since then, in the form of interest earnings, $182,736, as well as $4 million from free cash, and with a resulting balance after those transfers of We have also expended, either voted on and approved, or are pending before us, the amount of $3,922,923, leaving a balance of $20,935,179. And that is the financial report.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move on to items under Finance. There are four items this evening, two of which I'm going to have to recuse myself from, and I will explain those in a moment. But I'd like to first handle the two that I can participate in, and then I will turn the floor to the Vice President for those other two. So, I'm going to jump, if there's no objection, to C-54 first. Seeing none, Mr. Chairman of Finance, are you ready to report on C-54?
Sure. C-54, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the appropriation of $400,000 be made to the following accounts. Snow and ice expense account, $250,000. Snow and ice overtime account, $150,000. The Munis report that we most recently obtained reveals that the snow and ice expense account is overspent by $293,447. And the snow and ice salaries account is overspent, $18,738, $39. Of course, by statute, we are permitted to spend in deficit for snow and ice. It's fairly typical here that we do that. We always appropriate something a little bit less than what we expect to spend during the season. So, these funds are necessary to pay bills and keep the program going. Though it's March 27, we all know we live in New England as well, and unfortunately, we may not be done yet. So, it would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-54, and ask you to check with members of my committee.
Councilor Cormier.
I agree.
Councilor Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. President.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-54. Is there any, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-54 signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-54 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes. Order that the sum of $400,000 be transferred to the snow and ice expense account, snow and ice overtime account, $250,000, $150,000 respectively. Same to be appropriated from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the order for C-54 has been adopted. C-55.
C-55, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the appropriation of $409,033.54 be made to the Treasurer expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. We have a letter from Jennifer Reddington, our comptroller, dated March 20, 2023. Dear members of the City Council, the IRS passed regulations that require employers to offer health insurance. They have been behind in the review of the information that is submitted to them due to COVID. This year, the city sent a letter that they received, that they reviewed, 2000 and 2018. When we received these letters, they included the outliers that have, that they have questions on. Through transition of the department, we did not have the documents that contain the questioned items from the IRS. David, meaning David LaPlante, was able to contact the IRS and get the information that we need to support that the insurance was offered to the employees, or they did not work for the city in the period in question. Since there was a lag in the city receiving the correct information, the deadline has passed, and we have been assessed a fine of $409,033.54 for calendar years 2017 and 2018 for employer shared responsibility payments. We have been able to obtain the information that they are requesting. We have submitted all required information, and will receive a refund once the information is processed. Unfortunately, the IRS works slowly, and that review could take up to a year for our refund to be processed. Subsequently, we have received the request for 2019 and 2020, and have supplied the information to the IRS, so we will not be assessed the fine for those years. We have a process in place, so this should not be an issue going forward. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact my office anytime. Sincerely, Jennifer Reddington. So, little complicated, but what happens here is, as we all know, if you don't have our insurance, health insurance, or is not offered to an employee, there could be an employer fine for that. But we, like a lot of systems, and we're a big system, have employees that come in for, during the course of a year, or we have employees who have health insurance offered to them, but they're not on our plan because they have a spouse or some other situation where they have the coverage from a different source. So, that makes the reporting part of this a little bit more complex. And now, they've worked the proper protocols to be able to track those employees accurately, so we don't get into this situation in the first place. Unfortunately, back in 2018 and 2019, the process was a lot more cumbersome for the city, and getting that information, i.e., people who were not on our insurance for valid reasons, either A, because they had insurance from another source, or they didn't work here at that particular portion of the year, was slower in being supplied to the IRS. So, that's how we got into this situation in the first place. I've talked to the comptroller. She's confident that that won't happen in the future. So, this money, although we have to pay it, she's confident it will all come back, because these are all explainable circumstances for us not having insurance for those employees in question. It would be my position, Mr. President, based on that, to grant C-55, and I ask you to check with members of my committee.
Councilor Cormier.
I want to thank Councilor Bedanza for clarifying that. I had difficulty getting through that letter myself, and I agree.
Okay. And Councilor Angelini.
Well, we all know what happens if you don't pay the IRS. So, I think that if we, if we didn't move on this tonight, the number that we're looking at would grow expeditiously over time. So, I would be supporting this as well, Mr. President.
Okay. So, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-55. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, sorry, Council Frida.
No, I just want to add, after the last meeting, I did have a long conversation with Treasurer LaPlante and Jen Reddington, and it was an unfortunate slip, but they're, the, everything is in place now, as you referred to. And they're pretty sure that it should not happen again, you know, missing a deadline or whatever. And the unfortunate part is the IRS is slow, so be highly unlikely if we get this money back this year, but Jen is confident that we will get it. So, I was satisfied after talking to David and Jen. So, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. All right. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-55 signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-55 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $409,033.54 be appropriated to the Treasurer expense account, same amount to be raised from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the order for C-55 has been adopted. Now, on C-53, this involves Fire Department overtime. I do have an immediate family member, my brother, who serves in the Fire Department, so I do need to abstain from that. And C-56 is money that involves the Disability Commission. I serve on the Disability Commission. I am the elected official that the, that their commission calls for, to have one elected official on there. And I am also the Treasurer of the Disability Commission, so I cannot wear both hats, and I wear the hat of the Disability Commission on this one. So, I will recuse myself from that as well. So, Madam Vice President, if you will take the chair and work through those two for me.
Thank you, Mr. President. We can send this over to the Chairman of Finance, C-53.
Thank you, Madam President. C-53, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $250,000 be made to the Fire Department public safety overtime account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This is accompanied by a letter from our Chief of the Fire Department, Robert Sidlo. Dear Mayor Mazzarella, the Fire Department requests the sum of $250,000 for overtime costs. I am requesting the amount to be transferred at the discretion of the comptroller's office. My department's overtime spent to date is related to normal contract obligations, two members requiring duty injury coverage, two vacancies, military activation slash drills, recalls from residential fires, mutual aid, renovations to the headquarters at 210 Lancaster Street, and paramedic overtime. Overtime funds needed for the remainder of the fiscal year will be used for the above, along with normal vacancies caused by sick personal vacation leave. Thank you for your continued support. Should you have any questions concerning any of the above, please feel free to contact this office. You know, we've seen this many times over the years. Again, you know, the budgeted amount is not ever really sufficient to cover all of the overtime that is incurred by the department. Part of this, obviously, is contract obligated. It would be my position to grant C-53. Madam President, I ask you to check with yourself and the other member of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor Angelini.
I'll be supporting it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will be supporting it as well. So, you have a unanimous recommendation, Mr. Chairman? You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-53. Is there any discussion? Council Frida.
Through the Vice Chair to the Chair of Finance, are we exceeding our past years on, on the overtime?
I don't think so. I could get, I think we could probably get quickly enough a breakdown as to what we have done the last couple of fiscal years at this point. I might even have that data myself in the old Munis reports. I don't think we're in any different place than we've been before.
Not that I don't disagree with it, but I think it begs a discussion again about, should we have more firefighters and less overtime? And that's an ongoing thought in the community and from some of us, so.
As the chief has indicated when he comes down here, a lot of this is ambulance generated. So, it comes in in one form of revenue, you know, to the General Fund, and this is the General Fund paying them back, so to speak. So, that's another driver of this, too.
Council Frida, you done? Are you all set? Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify in the usual manner. By a vote of seven to zero. Oh, we need two votes.
Yeah, C-53 is granted.
C-53 is granted. Mr. Chairman, do you have an order?
I do. Order that the sum of $250,000 be appropriated to the Fire Department public safety overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the recommendation for the adoption of the order. All those in favor, say yea.
Yea.
Opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, C-53 has been adopted. Mr. Chairman, C-56.
Thank you. C-56, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the appropriation of $10,998.83 be made to the Disability Commission parking fines expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. And this is a letter from the mayor requesting this sum, and also from David LaPlante to the comptroller dated February 24. Dear Jennifer, I have just finished my analysis of the disability parking fines account for the past three years. I have found that several transfer letters for handicap parking fines were not transferred. I also found the handicap parking fines collected from July 1 to 2020 through December 31, 2022 were not transferred. We will need to ask for an appropriation for excess and deficiency, so we can transfer these funds to the Disability Commission parking fines account. And he has the sum of $10,998.83. So, just to explain how this works, fines from handicap parking go into an account with the Treasurer's Office, which is part of the General Fund. And then, historically, we send that money back to the Disability Commission's parking fines account for their use relative to enforcement or whatever other activities they deem appropriate. And we do this periodically, as Mr. LaPlante says. Apparently, they fell a little behind in getting this done. So, it would be my position, Madam President, to grant C-56, and I'd ask you to poll the rest of our committee.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Councilor Angelini.
I'd be in favor as well. It appears to be a housekeeping issue by Mr. LaPlante, and I will support it.
Thank you, and I will support it as well. So, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-56. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify in the usual manner. By a vote of seven to zero, C-56 has been granted. Mr. Chairman, do you have an order?
I do. Order that the sum of $10,998.83 be appropriated to the Disability Commission parking fines expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the recommendation for the adoption of the order. All those in favor, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, C-56 has been adopted. And I will turn the seat back over to Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Moving on to items under Legal Affairs, C-41. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. C-41, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the Council authorize the appropriate department, departments to research, develop, and participate in a contract or contracts to aggregate the electricity load of the residents and businesses in the city, and for other related services independently or in joint action with other municipalities, and authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the same. Mr. President, as you are aware, this matter has been before us on a couple of occasions. Most recently, a subcommittee meeting was held on the 15th of this month. Mr. O'Rourke came down to our chambers accompanied by Mr. Jim Pomerini. The Council had ample opportunity to ask questions. It's, I had the opportunity to go out and speak to several members, constituents of mine and other residents in the city. And the general consensus that I received was people are very hesitant and a bit reluctant to have something of this magnitude, decision about their electricity bill, being put on them, and then the onus is on them to disengage, to opt out, so to speak. I think another, another important point is that this service, third-party energy procurement, is available currently to anyone who wishes to enroll. There are several companies that operate in this space. As the proponent, Mr. O'Rourke from Good Energy noted, there are no price guarantees. And I think it's, it's clear, after the discussion we had, that a lot of this is based on timing. It's luck. When, when these companies contract for long-term power supply. When these companies contract for long-term power supply, and being a matter of timing and the fact that they can't guarantee that this is going to save residents money, and the fact that the program is indeed available to anyone who wishes to sign up for it, it would be my position, Mr. President, to deny C-41. And I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Badanza.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, too, have difficulty with the concept of imposing this on residents. The potential contractor was quite candid, and, you know, it's, the numbers speak for themselves. They need a certain segment of our electrical consumers in the city in order for the program to work. In order to get those consumers, the only way they can get to the number of consumers that they need for it to work is to impose it. If it was voluntarily, voluntary, you know, people are busy. People have busy lives, and they get a lot of mail, and it's sometimes hard to separate the wheat from the chaff, and things get overlooked. And, you know, if it's imposed, people may very well have no idea who's actually supplying them their electricity. The contractor was also very candid in suggesting there were at least a couple of occasions when the default rate from National Grid was lower than their rate. I, as a council, really don't want to be in a position to have a constituent come to me someday saying, hey, look, how did this happen? How is the default rate from National Grid a better deal than I got with Good Energy? And I can, and I'd be forced to tell them, well, I voted to give you Good Energy without you having really probably any idea about it. I just don't want to be there. I mean, you know, as Counselor Angelini indicated, the chairman, there are plenty of people out there supplying electricity at different rates, some of them very competitive, and people are free. They're not bound to take the default rate from National Grid, and they can sign up on their own if they, if it's really an issue for them. A lot of people, it's not an issue for them. I don't want to impose it on the people that it isn't an issue for. I just, it's just philosophically something I'm not comfortable with. So I'm against it as well, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And Counselor Deacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chairman Angelini, I'm in agreement with both of my committee members. Done some research. Obviously, I think we all know that National Grid got approved by DPU as of May 1 to drop from 33 down to, I believe, 14. I've just been watching these other companies over the last several weeks and even today, and they've already, companies are already down to 13.4, 12.2, 14.4. Obviously, it's a competition. It's springtime, summer, we're going to use less energy, hopefully. We know the rates go up in the wintertime. But in agreement with Counsel Badanza, I don't feel comfortable at all putting this on a homeowner and making a decision for them on their household. I think that we continue to educate and learn about this as we continue to go along. Obviously, this community is going about this. But I think it's the homeowner's decision to make that for themselves and their families. And it is, it's going to be competitive throughout. So I'm in agreement with Chairman Angelini and Counsel Badanza. Thank you.
Okay. So it sounds like we have a unanimous recommendation then of Legal Affairs to deny C-41. Is there any discussion? Counsel Brady?
Yeah, I just want to, actually, I want to pull out a quote from Reagan, five scariest words. I'm from the government, and I'm here to help. So this sings right to that. I don't think we should be in the business of telling our constituents what they're going to pay. If it was an opt-in option, great. But if it's only opt-out, I'm not comfortable with it.
Okay. All right, Counsel Arndt, did I see your hand as well?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, you know, I'm going to agree with, you know, everyone that's spoken before, but this program, it looks good. Mr. O'Rourke did a great job of selling it. But most people I've talked to, they either don't care, don't pay attention, or they certainly don't want the government making a decision for them. It reminds me of the, going back a few years, when we, the 55 mile an hour speed limit was imposed by the national government, and if they held the carrot out there, if you do this, we'll give you some money. If you don't, we'll take the money away from you. And that seems to be kind of the same thing. The government is trying to say, look, we'll give you this thing here, but it may cost you in the long run. You have no idea. Every time the utility rate, as Counselor Deacon mentioned, every time the utility goes out for bid, the companies, like we've mentioned a couple of them, always come in, and they are always able to undercut National Grid. And I'm not sure that this company can maintain that, because once they lock in, they said a 30 to 36-month agreement, you're talking three years. There's no way that that's going to be sustainable. And so I would agree to deny it.
Okay. All right. Is there any other discussion? Counsel Freida?
I don't disagree with any of the comments. I'm just curious, through the chair of the Legal Affairs chair, why would you not go with leave to withdraw without prejudice in case this is something good six months from now, and somebody wants to bring it back rather than deny it?
Well, I'm standing with denial. I don't, I'm not encouraging companies to continue to come down here and pitch this until perhaps, you know, a certain point in time where it looks more favorable than it would at another point. You know, it's, I don't know if you get calls like I do, but I get calls from energy brokers all the time, and this would be basically the same thing. Instead of us getting calls, we'd be getting petitions by energy brokers trying to come down here. And I think the consensus of this council so far, from what I've heard this evening, is quite clear. No one seems to be interested in forcing this down the residents' throats. And so for that reason, Counselor, and I do understand your question perfectly, but I, I'm quite comfortable recommending a denial.
Okay. All set? Counsel Badanza?
Yeah, I agree with the chairman. The imposition part is the problem. Now, if somebody came down here with a program that didn't have that, they wouldn't be precluded from this vote in advancing it, because it would be wholly different. So I agree with the chairman for that, on that basis, that the, if you're not going to change the imposition part of it, I'm not interested in it now, I'm not interested in it in six months from now. So I'm good with the denial, too.
Okay. Counsel Freida?
Through the chair, I guess the question would be, why did the mayor put it in to begin with? Obviously, he had, he wanted us to do it.
That'd be a great question to pose to the mayor, Counselor.
Well, I would assume, as the chair, you probably would have talked to him, got an idea.
I have spoken with him, but not about that specific issue. I obviously am addressing the petition from the mayor, and for whatever reason he decided to come down here, I just happen to disagree with him. So he told, in fact, I think the mayor stated that he signed up for the program himself. But that's outside of this pact that we would be entering into, which is an opt-out. So he did what any other resident in this community can do. Call up Good Energy, they can go online, and they can sign up for it. But again, I just don't feel comfortable putting people in a position where they have to opt out, or otherwise they own it. And again, there are no guarantees on pricing either. I mean, I don't know if I'd feel comfortable if they said, look, we guarantee we can beat anybody's rate by two tenths of a cent, which would amount to about a dollar or two in the average person's utility bill. For a dollar or two, I don't think I'd be willing to force this on people, even to death. But while I have the floor, I just want to recognize, I think Counselor Deacon made an outstanding point, that anybody that's been paying attention to this debate about energy has learned something. They've learned quite a few things. And I know that there are even people on this council who weren't aware of the fact that National Grid cannot make any money on the sale of electricity. They're prohibited by law and the regulation. So I think this has been a learning experience for a lot of people, and it's a wonderful thing. And I think, so there was benefit from this exercise that we participated in. And at some point, people may make the decision to go out and procure energy outside default rate with National Grid, and they certainly have that option.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Counsel Freida?
I don't disagree with any of it. I'm just curious that the mayor must have had some reason for asking us to do this. And he did come down here, and he had the gentleman down here with him. So is there something we don't know that he has in mind? And should we be, that was my only question. Should we be denying it and not giving him an opportunity to come back with anything? That was my whole question. I don't disagree with the position.
All right. Counsel Deacon?
Yeah, I'm not answering for the mayor at all, but I, I think that, you know, over the winter, we all were shocking our a little bit with our electric bills. I know I was, for sure. National Grid said it was going to go up 60%, around there, I believe, and they were pretty close. And it's, like I said, it's a competition. You search for the best oil price. When you buy your home, you look for the best interest rate. And I think bringing it down to the council maybe wasn't a bad thing, because we were able to have a subcommittee meeting. We had a good presentation from Mr. O'Rourke. I just think that it isn't a decision for the council to act on. And I think people, you know, it's maybe a wake-up call to be cautious and look around. National Grid's going down to 14. They know, they know they had to, you know? And DPU approved it, because all these other companies are now actually going to 14 or lower. So I think it's the right position for the council. I, for one, would not shove this down a taxpayer or homeowner's throat. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, the recommendation from the Legal Affairs Committee on C-41 was to deny. So all those in favor of denying C-41, signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-41 has been, in fact, denied. Moving on to 19-23, Mr. Chimani, ready to report?
I think Counselor Angelini is accusing.
Oh, I apologize. Counsel Badanza?
Yes, 19-23, William Brady, would one Counsel request to amend Chapter 13 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Section 13-34, no parking on certain streets by inserting the following: No parking on locked drive on both sides for the entirety of the street. We had a public hearing earlier this evening on this petition, and as indicated during the public hearing, a referral from the police chief was positive. We had a landowner on locked drive send in an email that was positive. And during the public hearing, we also had another occupant of that area come down and speak positively in favor of this particular petition. So all of the experience, Mr. President, is leaning towards granting this. I'm in favor of it, and I'd ask you to check with the other member of my committee.
Counselor Deacon, are you okay with this as well?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So you've heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant 19-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 19-23, signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, 19-23 has been granted. And Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that Counselor Angelini, I believe he stated at the last meeting, he has a business relationship with one of the abutters, and that is the reason for his abstention. Okay. Moving on to 20-23, Counsel Freida, under Public Service.
20-23, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Litchfield Street, National Grid, to install one single-home pole. On Litchfield Street, beginning at a point approximately 630 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Elm Hill Avenue, and continuing approximately 20 feet in a western direction, install one 45-foot class HI pole to support a load brake switch to de-energize the primary conductor in the location of the upcoming culvert construction by the Lummister DPW. Location approximately is shown on plan attached. Wherefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with Mark Litchfield Street, Lummister, Massachusetts, Number 30378259, February 9, 2023. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used exclusively for municipal purposes. We had a public hearing tonight, and we had a positive recommendation from the DPW. And my recommendation would be to grant the petition. If you would check with the third member?
Absolutely. Counsel Brady?
I'm in agreement.
Okay. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant 20-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 20-23, signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, 20-23 has been granted. Moving on to items under Ways and Means Appointments, we have one appointment. Madam Chairwoman of Ways and Means, ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the appointment of the following individuals to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire April 15, 2026. We had an interview this evening with Mark Pisoni of Lummister. He is a fairly new resident to Lummister, moving here just a year ago. We did have an interview with him. He has a very impressive resume that was shared with the members of the council. He did discuss that he has had some experience with the ZBA out of Sterling. He's been a landlord for 12 to 15 years, so he does have some experience going front of them. He does agree that he would have a little bit of catching up to do as far as the format of the meetings. When asked specifically about handling a crisis and crisis situation, he says that that's what he thrives in. And when you review his resume, you can see that that comes through as well. It would be my position to grant the appointment, and I'd ask you to check with the other member of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Arndt?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous, or you've heard the recommendation of the Ways and Means to confirm this appointment. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of confirming the appointment of Mark Pison to the ZBA, signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, Mr. Pison has indeed been confirmed to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we wish him the best. I think he has stepped out. Moving on to secondhand dealers licenses, there are one, two, three, four, there's seven of them, I believe, to deal with. And if there's no objection, if nobody has any problems with taking them all on block, I will ask the chairwoman to do that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I read this off, just to keep in mind that these applications are filed with the clerk's office. It's an application to renew a license. There is required to have a, the application, a letter of good standing from the treasurer and collector, and a letter in good standing from the Lummister Police Department, and I can confirm that, and all of these, well, I'll get to that. Let me read them now. It's 22-23, Degman and Company, DBA, Hanush Jewelers, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 100 Commercial Road, Lummister. 23-23, George's Fine Jewelers Incorporated, request to renew the license to deal secondhand articles at 255 North Street in Lummister. 24-23, Crown Jewelers, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 12 Lindell Avenue in Lummister. 25-23, George's Fine Jewelers Incorporated, doing business as House of Relics, request to renew their license to deal secondhand articles at 1292 Main Street in Lummister. 26-23, Everything Cutie Incorporated, request 26-23, Everything Cutie Incorporated, request to renew license to deal second-hand articles at 901 Central Street in Lummister. 27-23, Everything Cutie Incorporated, request to renew license to deal second-hand articles at 1021 Central Street in Lummister. And 28-23, Ginny's Helping Hand Incorporated, request to renew license to deal second-hand articles at 52 Mechanic Street in Lummister. I can confirm that on each of these applications to renew, 22-23 through 28-23, their packets are complete. A couple of them—I double-checked the insurance coverage with our clerk. She does have those on file for each of these. So it would be my position, Mr. President, to renew the licenses on each of these applications. And I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Arndt.
I agree.
Okay. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means to grant the second—seven second-hand dealers licenses. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, all of these have been granted. Good work, Madam Chairwoman. I know that we had passed an ordinance about these years ago to make sure that, you know, we were—have working with the police department so that nothing was being pawned, that was being stolen. And so far, it seems like everything's working out, and every year, we check—we do our due diligence and check into it. So thank you very much for that. All right. Moving on to—we have an exemption, C-57 under Ways and Means. Madam Chairwoman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Thank you. C-57, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that Angela Velez be exempt from the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 267a, Section 20b, Conflict of Interest. Ms. Velez is currently employed by the City of Lummister's Assessors Office and will be taking a position as warden for the election. This was given regular course on March 13th of this year. Mr. President, I would report that this actually comes up several times a year of different people willing to take positions and help out for different positions, whether it be with the Recreation Department, teachers with the Recreation Department over the summer. In this case, Ms. Velez would be acting as a warden for the election. I know from the past elections and speaking with the clerk's office, good qualified wardens are a necessity. And it would be my position to grant this exemption, and I would ask you to check with Counselor Arndt, the second member of the committee.
Okay. Counselor Arndt.
I certainly agree.
Okay. So you've heard the recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant C-57. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-57 signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-57 has been granted. Is there any new business to come before the city council? Seeing none, is there any old business?
Excuse me, Mr. President. Do you want to read the letter from Rick Votor regarding the Vietnam veterans?
Oh, yes. You want to do that in the community calendar?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. We can certainly do that in the community calendar. Thank you. Thank you very much. I will—I will go ahead and read. I was actually at the Veterans Center within the past week or so for something, and they did mention this to me, and they sent us an official communication that there's going to be a Vietnam Veterans Association, Chapter 116. They're going to be holding a Vietnam Veterans Day ceremony on March 29, 2023, at 1:00 p.m. or 1,300 hours military time. It will go for—a run for a couple of hours or so. It's going to be held at the Veterans Center, 100 West Street in Lummister. All are invited. And that is from Rick Votor. So if there's any further questions regarding that, you could give him a call. Is there anything else in the community calendar? Seeing—Counsel Freedom.
Along the same vein, this is a market calendar because it's just being formulated now, but it will be a pretty solemn occasion. It's—I don't know if anyone's familiar with it, but it's called the Dog Tag Wall. It's a moving flag that's familiar as the Vietnam Veterans Wall, Moving Wall, traveled. This is a flag that's made up of all deceased veterans from 2001 on. And it's—they've been trying to get it a couple of years in the city. You know, Operation Services has secured it for this year. It will be here April 28th, 29th, and 30th at the Johnny Row Park. It will be 24 hours, and there will be veterans and volunteers that will be accompanying the—well, some of our own people will be with the flag all night for the 24 hours. And on the 30th, on the 29th, Saturday, the 29th at 11 o'clock, it will be—there'll be the ceremony at Johnny Row Park for the families. And as we know, we have two—two members that are on that family—members that are on that wall with the Row Bridges and the Reynolds family. So I will give more information when it becomes available. But it's Vo Fallen Heroes Memorial is what it's actually—the exact title of it. But it's basically a more—more remembered as the Dog Tag Wall. So I will give—I'll give updates as they come along.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. If you can officially put that on the agenda for the—under community calendar for April 10th and April 24th, just so that it'll remain in light. And we look forward to more information about that. Thank you, Counsel Freedom. Is there any other items to come in the community calendar? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment. Counselor Badanza, Counselor Cormier seconded. All those in favor of adjourning signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.